City of Boston, zoning board of appeal hearing for October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March two thousand and twenty-three. I think we skipped a paragraph, but we can keep going. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. Next slide. Can we move to the next slide? As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment, and the time for commenting is time constraints required. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These are, okay, all right. Mr. Stembridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Langham. Mr. Langham? Oh, we don't hear you. All right, well, you're here, but your volume's not working, so you may want to jump off and jump back on. Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Collins.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Mr. Aiken.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, good to see you. All right, I will turn it over to Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will begin with the extensions from nine thirty. I'll read the first three of them and together, and then we will listen there. The first being case BOA one-two-two-seven-zero-seven-nine, with the address of fifty-seven to fifty-nine Greaton, Greaton Road. For that one, they're asking for a one-year extension from until October twenty-ninth of next year. Along with that, we have case BOA one-one-nine-eight-nine-seven-one, with the address of one-ninety-six of Hever Street. And they're asking for a first extension of one year until October twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-four. And also for this, in the first group, we have case BOA one-two-four-zero-seven-six-zero, with the address of forty-six Everett Street. Along with that, we have case BOA one-two-four-zero-nine-one-seven, with the address also of forty-six Everett Street. Along with that, we have case BOA one-two-four-zero-seven-six-five, with the address of forty-eight Everett Street. And along with, and with that one, we also have case BOA one-two-four-zero-nine-two-zero, again with the address of forty-eight Everett Street. They are asking for a one-year extension, which would take them up to October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. They all seem to be in order, Madam Chair.
May I have, may I have a motion?
I will motion, hold on a second, to extend for a year from today, correct?
Is that okay Javier, or do you need them to be exact?
Need the date.
Okay.
Madam Chair, it could be a motion from the date they requested. That's fine.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry, was that a second?
Yeah, second.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham, is he back with us?
I don't see him yet.
I see him, nope, where'd he go?
I think he just exited and tried to walk back in.
Okay, he disappeared, okay. Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes, yeah, okay, I see Mr. Langham, are you, can you hear, are you back? All right, your volume is still not working, I'm not sure what's going on. I know. While I, the chair will, supports the motion, motion carries. Hopefully, we can, Mr. Langham can resolve the volume issue. All right, next case?
Next case is BOA nine-eight-one-one-eight-zero, with the address of one-ninety-nine to two-oh-one Hampton Street. This one is, this is the applicant's first request, but the relief expired in February, on February twenty-seventh of this year. So we'd like to hear from the applicant to be granted an ex, why they want to be granted an extension until October seventeenth of two thousand and twenty-four.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Hi, this is Evan Smith. I'm asking for an extension. I went through a pretty substantial collapse of my prior business, which delayed my ability to get this project started. I'm now in a position to start this project. It's a five-story cross-laminated timber fourteen-unit house project in Roxbury. I'd really like to get it built, it's a good project, and I respectfully asking for an extension for one year.
Any questions from the board? If not, may I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, just like to hear, when you say you're about ready to start, what does that, what does that mean? Would approvals have been sought, and where do you stand in pulling permit permits?
All other approvals, including BPDA, Parks Department, Boston Water Sewer, transportation have been approved at this point. So basically, the permit will be ready to issue once I see the ZBA extension.
Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
A motion to extend for a year from today.
It's a year for, is that correct? Yes, okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Okay, is Mr. Langham back? He still can't hear you, Mr. Langham. Is it okay to accept his hand raised as a yes, Javier? All right, well, I'm gonna keep going, Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Next case?
Next case is BOA one-zero-three-five-six-zero-nine, with the address of eight-twenty William T. Marzy Boulevard. The board originally granted this relief on November thirteenth of two thousand and twenty, and appeal was filed in Superior Court that the applicant prevailed in, but are still waiting for state permits. With the previous extension, this relief remains valid until October twenty-fifth of this year. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension until October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there, is the applicant and/or representative present, their attorney?
Yes, Kelly Frey here, the applicant.
And just quickly, what, what, why do you need the extension?
We, when we applied for a state permit, a state permit with the Mass Office of Outdoor Advertising, we were initially denied, we appealed that to the administrative law judge, who said, entered a decision back in September, about a little over a year ago, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, saying that the Office of Outdoor Advertising should give us our permit. The Office of Outdoor Advertising refused to do so, so we had to appeal to the Superior Court, and the Superior Court entered a decision saying, saying that the OOA prejudiced the applicant's rights by failing to adhere to the agency decision and give us our electronic permits. That litigation took roughly a year, which is the extension that we got last time we were here, before the board a year ago. So now we're asking to reset to where we would have been if the OOA had done what the Superior Court said they should have done a year ago.
Okay, any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
A motion to extend through October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham? Okay, I'm gonna keep going, Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Our final request for an extension is case BOA one-zero-six-six-four-four-nine, with the address of Sixth Blubber Court. The board originally granted this relief on November sixth, two thousand and twenty, and the first extension was granted until October twen, twenty-fifth of this year. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension until October twenty-fifth of next year. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
Yes, Mr. Stembridge, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci, I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is a forty-three unit condominium project. The issue, not unpredictably, that has caused the delay is attempts to secure financing. My client is making diligent efforts on the financing and is confident that it is forthcoming, but we would request an additional one-year extension in order to secure the financing and enable the project to commence.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, I guess it'd be, it'd be helpful to hear where other approvals stand in terms of moving the project along, other than just financing?
It's an Article eighty project, so it was in addition, of course, to being approved by this board. It's been approved by the, by the Boston Planning and Development Agency. But as I say, the challenge has been coming up with financing for what is a forty-three condominium unit project. This is in the South Boston's Andrews Square area. But my client is confident that the financing will be forthcoming during the term of this final request of extension, if granted.
On receipt of financing you're ready to apply for and pull building permits? All of the design reviews and all of the processes are completed?
I think we, we still need to go through Public Improvement Commission for public realm improvements. But again, everything is anticipated, could be completed within a year.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
We'll make the motion to grant the extension until October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes. Yes.
I, no, by here, I'm trying to see if Mr. Langham is with us. Mr. Langham? All right, Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the nine-thirty hearing for G. Card and Building Code. The first case is BOA one-five-two-two-zero-eight-four, with the address of three fifty-eight Eight Marlboro Street. And there's also a companion case with that, which is case number BOA one-five-two-two-zero-eight-five, with the address, which also being three fifty-eight Marlboro Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Good morning, members of the board, Armando Hernandez here with a three fifty-eight Marlboro Street project. We got a recommendation letter from the groundwater trust, and we should be good to go.
Okay, any questions from the board? It's a, just to confirm, Mr. Semenali is not with us, did provide, but did confirm all the letters. Board members, thank you. Okay, hearing none, questions, may I have a motion?
Motion, can you remind me of the date, though?
There's no date, this is just a.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to have heard.
Sorry.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham? Nope, okay, Mr., sorry, Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Next, we will move on to the regular hearings for nine, scheduled nine-thirty. The first is case BOA one-four-eight.
Are we asking for, for any withdrawals or extensions?
That would be a bit of a, here. At this time, was there any, is there any request for withdrawals or deferrals from nine-thirty hearing?
Hearing none, just want to, at this time, say that we are a six-member board until further notice, so please proceed.
Madam Chair, we have, we have one raised hand, Michael Welsh.
Okay.
I asked him to unmute. Michael, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is for four twenty-one East Sixth Street in South Boston. We are requesting a deferral.
Okay.
You're about to.
What's going to be?
That would be for case BOA one-four-three-eight-two-seven-nine, yes, with the address of four twenty-one East Sixth Street.
And Madam Chair, the next available date would be November fourteenth.
Does that work for the applicant?
Yes, that works.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to have heard in November fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, see you then.
Thank you.
Any further requests for any withdrawal or deferrals from this time, time period?
All right, please proceed.
Then we will. The threat case is case BOA one-four-eight-five-nine-six-three, with the address of three forty West Second Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
I believe I see Mr. DiPiero. You're on mute, sir.
Good morning, I'm Jerry DiPiero, DiPiero Construction.
Great, please proceed.
Yes, I'm representing John Bullock at three forty West Second Street, unit number twenty-five. We've gone upon the board, was it about ten months ago, it's about ten months ago, and we were asked to come back, reducing the footprint of the platform that's going to be attached to the existing one that's there. I'll pull that up now. Originally, there was about eleven hundred, eleven hundred and fifty square feet, we reduced it to five hundred and ninety-seven square feet. And the, the reason for this, we were asked to reduce the square footage on the, on the deck. Basically, it's just basic platform, two-by-four sleepers with decking attached to match what's already there, which is marked in yellow, the existing deck. And here I am today, asking for approval on the two added sections of platform for the bullocks.
Great, thank you. Any questions, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion? Oh, sorry, public testimony, my apologies.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood and Services. This time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of the board. Some background information on the community process, Owen S. Hosted in a Butters meeting on July twenty-fourth. There were a handful of residents who attended, two vocalized their opposition. In an email exchange, the proponent was able to answer a question from one resident regarding the construction process, and reportedly, the Butter was pleased with the response. With that information, we'll defer to the board at this time. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Is Ms. Platt speaking on this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Camille Platt, I'm a project manager with the BPDA. Just some context as well, the proponent filed a small project change on July seventeenth of two thousand and seventeen. Comment was open for thirty days per the code, and we held a public meeting. Small project change was approved by the DPDA board on August tenth of two thousand and seventeen. The change was from the originally approved December two thousand and thirteen project, changing the programming from rental to condo units. Number of units was not affected, thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, are you speaking to three forty West Second Street?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Can we all raise hand here, I'm sorry, just a second.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, also, Councilman Flaherty's office, I know that Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office is trying to be made a panelist for the case.
I just communicate to Anna, and then I'll make a panelist, once you're finished speaking, sorry.
Thank you so much, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. We provided a letter in opposition to this proposal earlier to the board, proof that has long been a source of loud noise at all hours, disturbances, and trash removal issues for South Boston, which were exacerbated for a significant degree by the pandemic. South Boston has seen dear significant quality of life issues for years to two loud house parties with roof decks often the location of such parties. Moreover, neighbors have expressed responding roof decks would naturally be for the purpose of inviting additional people to engage in these activities that have negatively impacted neighbors' quality of life and disturb abutters. Both the neighbors and the same victim slower and neighborhood association have expressed opposition to the proposal and indicated a granting approval for repartaging of a roof deck who set up residence for several other roof decks. Both have the very same building and industrial as they. Therefore, two, two issues that consider oppose this current proposal, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Stoll, City Council, Michael Flaherty, echoing Senator Minister, Council President Flynn's office, as well as the violations on Article sixty-eight, County Eagle, and the opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, they have no additional ways to end at the moment.
Thank you. Any other questions?
To the board, is it possible I could, I could chime in for a second?
Yeah, can you also clarify, is the roof deck for this entire building, is it for one unit?
It's, it's for, it's for the unit, the unit owner, it's, it's specific to the unit owner. Right now, there's a platform there, all, all the units have just a platform. And basically, as far as the noise, I'd just like to talk about the noise, the unit, you'll see a letter that I submitted on the unit that was, they were having some problem with, now has been bought by somebody else, and there's a letter that I submitted on, there has been no issues since that, that unit was sold. There's been no issues with the building or noise or anything of that nature coming from that building. Secondly, as far as the issues that they were having, they've been, they've been monitoring, and the building has been without issues for a long period of time since it was purchased. If you take a look at the letter, it speaks for itself on the monitoring of the building and the, the changes to what was going on there in the past.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the project.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham? You need to unmute yourself?
Yes, yes.
Oh, right, we can hear you, good stuff. Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you, thank you for this.
Somebody's echoing, I don't know Jessica what you may be able to do about that. All right, next case? The one after that? And now you're on mute, Mr. Stembridge?
Sorry about that, Madam Chair. This is case BOA one-four-four-four-one-one-three, the address of eight Adrian Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
I think I saw him trying to be elevated to a panelist?
Yes, he is.
Yes, the applicant is here.
Perfect, great, please proceed.
Good morning, my name is Andrew Falkenstein. I'm an architect with an office located in Brookline. We are here today to seek relief for the construction of a two-family home on an existing vacant lot. This is going to be a, a small house, it's going to be two and a half stories high, total of twenty-five hundred square feet, containing two two-bedroom apartments. I see that the plans are being shared. Basically, we have two duplexes, the first floor unit has direct entry from the front porch, and it has stairs down to a second bedroom in the basement. The unit number two has direct staircase access from the front porch, and has a one-bedroom on the second floor, and then stairs up to a master bedroom on the attic level. This, I'm more than happy. This, I'm more than happy to share photos of this lot. This lot is overgrown. It's, frontage is on a unpaved private road. And it also, but for the extension of an adjacent road, which is perpendicular, which is called Ramlet Place, this, this house would be on the corner. And this house maintains the spacing and the alignment of existing homes on Ramlet Place. This lot has been vacant for a long time. Although, the map that we're looking at right now shows Adrian Street to stop where it does, it actually does continue along the full length of the property. We're not looking to connect the two ends because there's an existing fence. We want to keep that fence on the other side of Adrian there. But we would be improving the road, paving it if the neighbors are okay with it at our own expense, and making it a nicer road to park on, to keep clean, and to encourage parking for the new residents. So, again, we, I am not aware of any objections from any Butters at any of the, any of the meetings.
We'll hear from, we'll hear from them directly, thank you, any other?
And, again, we are aware that this lot area of the lot is insufficient, that our FAR is greater than the allowable FAR. And due to the size of the lot, we have insufficient front side and rear setbacks. However, our setbacks on those three sides are very similar to existing adjacent dwellings. And we have built, we are proposing a house which is a little bit smaller of a footprint than any of the adjacent neighbors. So we feel we've done our best to adapt to the site conditions, and that the existing vacant lot, which has collected a lot of trash and a lot of homeless people, and has created some noise issues in the past, would be better off with two sets of homeowners who are invested in the neighborhood and help bring this part of the city a little bit more alive. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I have a few questions, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't think there was a plot plan in this set of plans. I was able to obtain one after my initial review. Yeah, it's an area plan, but can you talk? So there's no driveway contemplated on site? Mainly, the parking would be on Adrian Street once improved?
Yes, that's correct. I believe that, well, I do, we do have a proposed site plan, which was submitted. And essentially, what we are contemplating is, we're contemplating a walkway from Adrian Street to the front porch. We're also contemplating another walkway from the end of Ramlet Place to the porch. The existing home on Ramlet Place due north of this proposed building is owned by the same owner that is proposing 8 Adrian Street. Number one, you can see that it's a lot bigger. But number two, this owner would have no objection to a walkway, you know, from the end of Ramlet Place, giving the people at 8 Adrian Street two choices to enter and leave their home.
Okay, and I thought I heard you say, you know, part of the rationale for improving, you know, Adrian Street and making that connection is so vehicles may park there for this property? Has there been any, I mean, do you have that width to allow a vehicle and still allow vehicles to pass through safety safely?
We do, I believe that the, that the right of way is 30 feet or 32 feet. And because the road has been unpaved and it's been encroaked upon by weeds, that's not been maintained. But if you, actually, if you look, in fact, so, one of the Butters just south of us was concerned that we would protrude into her rear yard. And we assured that we wouldn't. But I believe that on this map that we're looking at, the white public way, which is identified as Adrian Street, is, is just an error. The actual width of the legal right of way is that beige, you know, light beige color.
Recording in progress.
And I believe it's at least 30, like I said, at least 30 feet. So there is, there is ample width to have parking on the street if improved.
Thank you, no, no more questions from me.
Thank you, any other questions from the board?
I guess, Madam Chair, yes, just a quick question. There was the comment about having access through the Butters lot. Is that going to be done as an easement? So that it lives in perpetuity?
That's a good question. The, at this point, the Butters feels that they have a Butters rights to extend Ramlet Place right to the edge of the subject lot. And at that point, they could then 45 right onto the property, through their own property. If there were a condition of this board that a permanent easement to pass by foot were recorded with the registry, we would have no objection to that. But we had not, we had not discussed whether that would be an easement.
Thank you. May we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. My apologies, Madam Chair, I don't have a lot of information on this proposal due to some personnel changes that we've had. We'll defer to the board at this time. I understand that an Butters meeting was held. And as the proponent's representation mentioned, there had been concerns previously from residents with the condition of the property. I think dumping was, was an issue in that area. At the Butters meeting...
This meeting is being recorded.
At this meeting, there were some residents reportedly who expressed some confusion over how the building would, how the structure would work on the, on the lot. The applicant also wanted to meet with Civic Association, which is a Sustainable Development Committee in April of 2022. Because the project at Adrian doesn't contemplate any affordable units, the SDC decided not to support the project. But they expressed they hope the project follows the city's zoning regulations in terms of open space, bedroom side, for bedroom sizes for families with kids in onsite parking, which is a big issue for local residents, they reported. Beyond that, we'll defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Any other raised hands?
Let's have what looks like the applicant on top. Like, I think outside of that, we have no additional raised hands.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any final questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Hi.
I'm sorry, are you...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know I was unmuted. I, I just wanted to, I work with Andrew, and I just wanted to say that it helps a lot if you see the Google map, like the actual Google map bird's eye view, because you'll see how that lot is loaded and opened.
I think we're ready for a motion, thank you. May I have a motion?
A motion to approve BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Here, also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have it's BOA 1450560, with the address of 81 to 81A Renncombe Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
Hey, yes, this is Chris Drew, 686 Architects. I'm also joined by Michael Heinz.
Sorry, Jessica, can we mute?
I think it might be coming from the person. Are there multiple people talking behind you, sir, or is it just you?
No, it's just me.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. The proposal is, who are two and a half story, two-family townhouse style building. The garage, garage apartment is under the 1st floor. Each unit will be family-style housing. And we also providing a 20-foot fiber access lane, which has been reviewed already by BFD.
This meeting is being recorded.
It's just the existing plot plan, which shows there is an existing single family. The proposal will be subdivided, so the single family is shown right there. Is as of right in two, the proposed two families into the rear is the one that is being...
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, Mr. Langham, we need you to mute your microphone or do something. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Drew.
Sorry about that. So each, so each garage will be about two-type garage. On ground level, the second floor, which will be the initial living level, will have an open living dining kitchen area with half bath. And then on the next floor up will be the two bedrooms, a master suite, and then a regular bedroom. That's just the elevations. As the left elevator, I'm sorry, the right side elevation, and then the front elevation is at the bottom of the page. Then the left side elevation and the rear elevation. And we have some, some decks and stuff right off the back. Car moving area.
Madam Chair, this is Hybrick. Can the applicant speak a little bit closer to the mic? It's a little difficult to hear on our end.
Yes, please, Mr. Drew.
Absolutely. So at this point, I'll open it up, we'll open up for any questions or comments. We'll open next.
Okay, questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I would like to ask if the BPDA is here. They have commented about the lot division. I'm not sure if there's an issue with the division of the lot at this moment.
Mr. Hampton? Are you present, or is someone else present?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes. Mr. Valencia, as you can see in our recommendation, we're opposed to this project, not only for the subdivision, but the size of the curb cut as well, going from 10 to 25 feet. And there's a lot of impermeable space that's being introduced to this project. So on those recommendations, as you can see, we're opposed to this project.
May I just comment on the curb cut itself?
Yes, please.
So the only reason for that curb cut is the BFD requirement of having a firing access. Believe it wasn't our idea, we would not try to have that free space. But due to BFD, we have access to the, to the two families. This is their requirement that we have a 25-foot wide curb cut, which we know is not, you know, standard. But these, this is coming directly from BFD because of the way that the lot is situated, the building on the lot, that we have to provide that. So with that, we have to provide a 25-foot wide curb cut.
May I ask a question related to that? Is that rear building proposed to be sprinkled? Or is that the reason, you know, does that have anything to do with the width of the curb cut and the fire department needing access?
We had offered to sprinkle this building at the same time to avoid having to do the firing. And they said whether we sprinkle it or not, they are going to require the 25-foot wide curb cut and the 20-foot wide, 20-foot wide fire department access to the back of the lot itself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is Michael Heinz, I'm the proponent as well, representing the proponent with Chris Drew. And as far as the impervious surfaces, we would be fine with doing a permeable driveway. That, this is the first we're hearing of the BPDA comments. We've not been, we've, no one's reached out to us to make these comments to us in the 22 months that we've been dealing with this project.
Can you also comment about your setbacks? Rear yard setback was also one of the issues BPDA raised?
Well, unfortunately, with the, with the, the way that the lot is laid out, the way that existing lot is, that is really one of our own setback violations is the rear. As you look at L1, you can see like the red line of kind of what may be allowed. But again, to get the access, ask for this... All right, one more, all right, keep going, sorry. Keep going, one more. Yeah, so if you zoom in on that real quick. So on this, you see the, the red dash lines, the little thin line. That's basically our setback. So if, how do you say it, we remove this building up, the problem is we wouldn't have any access into the garage and for parking. So that's kind of what pushed the building back. But as you can see, we need outside the setbacks. It really is just the rear. We still end up with, in the rear, we're still ending up with a, we're still ending up with just over 20 feet to the dwelling itself. So we still do have some distance.
And that, that setback's consistent with other properties in the community. The, the real issue that drove the design, as many revisions done had through ISD and BFD, was that additional driveline. It evolved of the lot and made us, we had to transform the size of the project because of the driveline.
Any other questions from the board?
Could you explain the, like, the need for that 20-foot wide paved area? I think it's 20 by 30.
That is the 20 by 30 paved area? That's, that's called a handlehead turnaround? That's what the fire department requested from us. So they could drive in, back up, I don't have the ability to show you with my mouse, but they would drive in and then be able to back up to drive out again. So that they'd drive onto the paved area in front of the two-family, and then pull into pavement, back out the driveway again. They don't feel like they could back out to Rentham safely. So that was the additional requested pavement area from the BFD as a matter of safety. We didn't get to talk about the proponent yet, but the proponent's a Boston school teacher, has been in the school system for over, I believe, going over 40 years. Had a community participant in a lot of community activities. And she had this property quite some time, and she would just like to do this for the legacy of her family, her children. And she is prepared to stay in the main building and keep the other property for her family. So it's been a long time going through this. And as Chris said, we did work with BFD. We did offer to sprinkle the building, but they did insist on having this. I think it's hard to see without the global map of how Rentham Street turns, and that's why the access was a concern for them.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Can we have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ross Cochrane with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed their community process at this time. Our office held an Butters meeting in June of this year with four people were in attendance. There was no direct support or opposition from those Butters, but there was some concerns over older trees that are on the property. Likewise, I have received two letters of opposition that are on file with the ZVA. And the local civic association is opposed to this project as well. This time, we'd like to defer to the board's judgment, thank you.
Mr. Cochrane, did they give particular reasons for their opposition?
No, they did not. I just spoken with the civic association leader yesterday, and they had just said that it would be appropriate for me to convey that they are in opposition to it.
Okay, thank you. Any other raised hands?
I'd like to make a comment on that.
Can we finish the public process first, thank you. Any other raised hands, Jessica?
Yeah, Christian, ready to testify?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, it says your name, I guess.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Christian Hakes, and I'm a resident Dorchester living perpendicular to this proposed project. I'm here to voice my opposition to the proposed construction. Two weeks ago today, my wife and I welcomed our first child. We chose to lay roots in Dorchester because of its rich history, beautiful diversity, and really just wonderful area to live and raise a family. This proposed construction would not only dramatically reduce my family's privacy, it would also cripple the little natural delight that we and our neighbors enjoy in our backyards. Additionally, this proposed construction's in direct violation of Article 65, Section 42 dot 13, dwelling behind another dwelling. Not only is this going to be a dwelling behind another dwelling from the Rentham side of the street, it also would be a dwelling behind a dwelling from all of the neighbors that are on the Bruce Street side of this project. So this multiplies in terms of the adjacent homes as well as the surrounding properties. Just encourage everyone to please think of our family, the expectations of privacy, as well as the other dozens of residents who are going to be negatively impacted by this project. I thank you for your time, and I hope you make the right decision.
Thank you.
And our caller, 617921. I sent a request to unmute you, go ahead.
Hi, this is Susan Morrison. I'm also a direct Butters to the property. And I agree that none of these variances should be allowed. There are multiple violations. It's a small city block. This will be not only a dwelling behind another dwelling, it will be, have to be behind multiple dwellings, which will have a negative impact on natural... on natural light, last load to all the buildings. In addition to reducing privacy, which is already very minimal in the city, I, I think it also takes precedence. You can't nettle buildings behind buildings in the middle of a small city block and not expect a negative impact to all the others. Thank you.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. Uh, I think Mr. Hahn wanted to say something before we proceed.
I did, yes. So, so I understand the, um, the, the comments by, um, the butters. Uh, I don't believe the impact is as great on natural light, uh, given that this is a grove of, um, overgrown trees right now and the, and as I understand, people have concerns about that. There's also a big need for community housing, but if we look, I've been a Dorchester resident for my whole 58 years. I live on West Nolan Street, two blocks away from this, uh, three blocks away from this property. And, uh, as I understand about the dwelling behind dwelling, this property actually has its own frontage and sits on a 9,100-plus square foot lot, which is fairly large. If I look at the other developments that have been recent for housing and, uh, in the Dorchester neighborhood, anything this size would have 16 to 18 units on it. I think the homeowner requesting to add two units to her property, uh, is not only there, uh, I think it's, it's pretty, a low, pretty low bedroom count compared to all the other development that is getting approved in our community that's coming.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. Um, so it, it seems like the fire department is requiring you to have that 25-foot and the BPDA is kind of contradicting each other. Am I getting that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
Go.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have one, one more question. Um, and that is the, there's a lot of, uh, paved space there. Can you explain, I guess, why there needs to be a garage? If that, is that adding height to the, to the building by having, uh, garage on the first floor?
So the building itself is really, it's only like two and a half, I mean, it's a two-and-a-half story design. Um, technically, you know, because the area itself is considered a three-story. Um, it would be tough to get the parking in front of the building with maneuverability. Um, you know, if you think of a car being on the left-hand side, maneuvering around the right-side unit, it would be tough. This, this room would probably have to push back more. Um, yeah, with, this is just basically giving the driveway and some, some of the, the garage and back out, you know, on it, you know, out of the street itself. Um, if we were to add, take the parking out of there and add it to the thing, it would just be more paint, paint safe whether it's going in or not. Um, and we would lose some room space itself. Um, and that was one of the, you know, ideas was, you know, thought about was, you know, having this entire space, the all-paving between the firing and parking, trying to, you know, finding a nice balance, if you will.
Would you end up with a, a smaller, shorter structure?
It would potentially be shorter, but we'd end up with more paving and less green space.
Understand.
So, in, in terms of shadowing light, if we look at all the other properties in the, in the, in the abutting properties other than, uh, Ms. Whitaker's lot, which is exceptionally large lot for Dorchester, but we look at the other ones, the spaces, spacing between buildings is, uh, greater in this property than we're proposing it is and mostly about is between their own buildings.
Okay, with any final questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion to deny without prejudice. I think, um, I'd like to take the BPDA's recommendation on this. I think due to its placement in the lot and surrounding structures, three stories is not appropriate here. You know, what it sounds like is the applicant did a lot of work with the fire department, which I think is important, but it also sort of places it at odds with zoning and the city's plans. For, so for those reasons, I'm, um, denying without prejudice.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Here, also votes yes. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we, uh, have a break until 11:00 AM. See you back then. Is that right? Yes, thank you.
Recording stopped.